Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January tenth work session for the Harnett County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. I will now ask Ms. Commissioner McCoy if she will lead us in the pledge allegiance and indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, I come before you this morning just giving thanks for all your blessings and for another day. I give thanks for having a governing board for this county and its constituents. God, I ask that you guide us. Guide us in the right way and give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the patience to make the right decisions for our county as well as for our constituents. Continue to restore blessings on all of us, on all the whole county. In your name, my friend, amen.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Presentation regarding the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Assistance or Justice Assistance, uh, Corey Price?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Hope everybody's well this morning. Very exciting news to bring to you this morning. It's something that we applied for an application many months ago, Reaching Rural Initiative. Let me tell you a little bit about what it is, how it works, who's involved, and how it's going to benefit Harnett County. As you're well aware, the United States is experiencing an overdose epidemic. More than 107,000 Americans died from overdose in 2021, an increase almost 15% from 2020. So, this is actually great timing as far as where the opioid settlement is coming from with the task force that we have formed over the last couple of months with the settlement dollars that are coming into Harnett County, and this will do nothing but enhance that. So, who is responsible for this? So, the U.S. Department of Justice, the Office of Justice Programs, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the National Association of Counties, and the State Justice Institute are cosponsoring this initiative. So, what it is and how does it work about the opportunity? Well, this initiative will empower rural practitioners to build deeper networks, particularly across sectors, adapt bold solutions to the persistent challenge of substance use and misuse in rural communities, and reimagine how diverse systems will different missions can engage with one another to more effectively serve justice-involved individuals with substance use or co-occurring disorders. So, like I said, it couldn't be more perfect timing. It's an honor to be selected for this group. So, what this will do is assess local and regional opportunities for systematic change, build leadership skills to facilitate cross-sector collaboration, explore the implementation of evidence-informed strategies in diverse rural settings, and identify opportunities for different sectors. It is a year-long commitment, so we will have to travel to three different locations at three different times. One is February, one is in May, and one is in December. Other than that, we will be meeting virtual. We have a lot of homework to do. We have a lot of collaborating to do, building the relationships across the United States. So, we were one of eight counties in the United States to be selected for this initiative. So, there was North Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, Arizona, California, Washington State, and Minnesota. So, that's quite an honor. So, we have seven members that are associated with this particular initiative. Chris and I will be kind of co-chairing this team. John Rouse, our health director, is another member. Jeffrey Armstrong, the captain in the Sheriff's Department, is a member from that particular sector. Then, we have Dr. David Tillman at Campbell University, who's the Chair of the Department of Public Health, College of Pharmacy and Public Health. And Jermaine White is the Assistant Superintendent for Harnett County Schools. And Mark Morris with Good Hope Hospital will be a part of this team. So, it's a seven-member team. So, you can see on the sheet that I give you, that kind of shares. The yellow is the counties that I just mentioned across the United States. There are also individuals that were selected to this group as well for the cohort, so they will be blending as well in this group. And so, this is something that Chris and I and this team are very excited about. We've been in constant contact with this group, and we just found out a few weeks ago as far as our acceptance. So, throughout the year-long program, fellows were learned directly from rural practitioners and each other, received coaching, and participate in skill-building workshops and peer-to-peer learning experiences. What we'll do with that is bring that back into Harnett County and collaborate with this task force that we have formed here in the county, and then look and see how we can combat this epidemic that has happened here in the United States as well as the rural areas. This is for rural areas. That's one reason how we were selected as far as Harnett County is concerned.
And I would say it's a varied diverse group. Other than being across the country, you've got judges, you've got attorneys, public health officials, administrative nonprofits. So, it is wide spectrum of everyone who's involved in this process as part of these teams. And I think, you know, Corey already mentioned all the individuals, and that's what's highlighted in the blue and all this. So, you do have, they're not our team, individuals all across this country from rural communities. So, as Corey said, this is, I think, a very good opportunity. Again, we are one of two counties on the East Coast to be selected for this. So, this is really going to help us. We'll continue to meet with the big group, with the opioid task force, to how to spend this money. But this is going to go along with us to help us present solutions as we get the big group together. So, this is a perfect opportunity to find the best way to spend this money. I think we can set a standard for how this can happen across, not just our state, but across the country.
And as each of you are aware, we're putting together a strategic plan for the settlement dollars. And what they'll do with this particular initiative is pair us up with individuals across the United States. There may be some things in California that they've done well that we want to bring back here or vice versa. So, we'll have different sectors as far as what we're being involved in and share with the leadership skills and reaching out to the folks across the country. So, exciting opportunity. Very proud to be a part of this. Quite an honor, and I just wanted to share that with you. And if you have any questions, Chris, then I'll be glad to answer.
If I may, Mr. Price, and I may have missed this, but I think you clarified it, at least for me there at the end. So, this will be a benefit for us as we go about working through dispensing and utilizing the money from the settlement, from opioid settlement, so that, you know, hopefully we will make the most effective use of those funds. Okay. Yes, thank you.
No, thank you for clarifying that. What we have done is we, Chris and I and this group have been listening intently over the last few months about where we're at. And Ms. McCoy, Commissioner Wetherspoon have been involved in this quite a bit. So, we're hearing. And what's good about this is everybody's come into a room. So, it's not just the sheriff or the hospital or EMS or behavioral health. We've all sitting at the table. We understand one another's needs. So, what we're trying to do is rise up together in the best way possible to figure out a strategic plan to put these monies in place. It's not a silver bullet, but it's going to really help. And so, that's why we're so excited about this initiative and how we can come together as a group and make this happen even better for our county.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear the news. I'm glad that they have considered us to be involved in this Harnett County. A question I want to ask you, you have already organized a stakeholders' committee, right? You are going to bring the information back to the stakeholders' committee, and that committee is going to be the one to decide in what direction we will go with the information that you are bringing to us and with the funding, right?
Yes, ma'am. So, thank you for bringing that up as well. This committee, we're going to try to get together this week. I know Chris and I are meeting with Dr. Tillman. We're going to call for another meeting of the task force. And what we would like to put on the agenda first is what we mentioned with Dr. Agnella from Campbell University coming in and doing an education session about the opioid epidemic, if you will, the good, bad, and ugly of kind of where we're at, what we're up against, and just so people can have an understanding of what's going on right here in our own backyard. So, Dr. Agnella is more than happy to do that. We're going to try to go ahead and pick a date in the very near future. What I would love to do is have it downstairs in the training room and then zoom in with people that can attend, and we'll record that. And so, I'm sure he'll go into deep depth of that and then, you know, questions, concerns, comments from the audience as well. So...
And then, we do have a Zoom meeting coming up. In the third week of February, we are having our first in-person meeting outside of DC. So, we'll have a chance to really start talking to individuals. And then, hopefully, we'll then presumably schedule another meeting amongst the task force to report back what we have discussed, what we're learning from across the country and start, you know, implementing plans as we move along. So, everything that we learn up there, we'll report to the task force because now we'll get a broader base knowledge of what's not just going on in our state, but what's going on across this country.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I thank you for all the hard work that you're doing and the input that you have in this because it's a serious problem in Harnett County. It's a very serious problem. And I hope that we can find some, we can take some of the information that you bring back and try to put it and organize it here in Harnett County. Something has got to be done. Thank you very much.
Totally agree. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And then, I think the plan would be, you're correct, is now we present to you, we want to get this information out that we, Harnett County is moving forward this. I know we've prepared a press release to announce this, that we're going to, that Harnett County is participating in this. That's okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Here, I would like to say, hey, I really appreciate this. I mean, us taking this second step. I mean, obviously, the first step is to admit that we have a problem. And I think the whole nation needs to wake up and admit that we actually have the problem. But since we took that first step, I'm glad that we're finding goals and a plan and then the resources now in order to actually start making some advances to make a change. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Moving on, Mr. Trout, would you like to take care of it?
Yes, I want to cover real quick. Back when we were going through, looking at the animal ordinance and so forth, we brought forward a concept of creating an animal foster adoption program. Staff has not had an opportunity to prepare that completely yet, but based on your motion that you may bring it back today at this meeting. So, we are making a report, but the report is simply we're not ready yet to unveil the program to you. We're continuing to develop it, and we'll bring it back in February. I believe it was February.
It's the...
Yeah. So, in February, besides presenting on the animal adoption program, we're also going to present the information from our consultant related to the animal shelter and the construction project at the animal shelter and provide you the scope of what was recommended by the consultant and the building and the costs and so forth for that. So, we're going to pair those together, and we'll be back in February to present.
For the update, anyone have any questions? All right, moving on to item number five. Mr. Sykes, if you would discuss DOT and add some roads.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Just as we've seen in the past, DOT has requested a resolution, just so the local body knows that DOT will be accepting roads into their state system. These are in two older subdivisions. We see this happen every once in a while when there's roads that haven't been taken into the system. Someone wants to come in, typically like a small builder or independent builder, to finish out some lots. So, amongst all the new developments that we have, they also come in and kind of infield, is what we call it. So, they finish out the lots. The roads get taken over by DOT. So, it's a win-win altogether. Again, these subdivisions have been on the books for a while, so it's great that DOT is taking over the roads. And again, it's just kind of like an FII for everyone in the county and then for the governing body to bless DOT's actions essentially.
I just want to know, where is this road located?
So, Rolling Springs is kind of in the Anderson Creek area. It's kind of near the Anderson Creek Country Club and the landfill out that way, Country Squire Estates, I think is also near Ray Road intersection, all that area.
Home Over Hills at Ray Road.
Oh, Over Hills. Yes, sir.
Over Hills, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ira, would you like to come up and discuss us trying to acquire a domain name?
So, this one should be quick and easy, I think, too. All governments across the nation are going to a .gov domain name, and Harnett County NC.gov would be our domain name. About four or five of the county, or several of the counties around us have already switched over to this. My plan right now is just to claim the domain, put it out there for people to be able to reference and use, so as part of the standard across the nation. But we'll still keep Harnett.org for the foreseeable future, but we'll start slowly switching over to the Harnett County NC.gov domain name. I've got some samples if you want to see anything different or if you have any questions about it. But like Wake County, they've claimed their Wake County NC.gov domain name, but they still reference their WakeGov.com domain. So, if you go to WakeCountyNC.gov, it actually forwards you over to the WakeCounty.gov, or I mean, I'm sorry, the WakeGovernment.com domain. And that's the way ours will work, too.
So, you're requesting to claim the name now. Have you already, do you already have the name?
So, this, because it's a .gov, it's a very unique scenario. Basically, I need the highest authority within the government to sign a letter for us to be able to claim that, and that would be you, Mr. Nickel. So, I just need you to be able to sign that letter, and then we'll submit that paperwork. I actually tried with Mr. Trout, and they said, nope, you got to be the highest authority, not just the signing authority. So, Mr. Trout's name was denied, so I had to come back.
Get you know where you fit in.
Can I ask what the pleasure of the board is?
All means pursued.
Glad somebody think we important.
I've got to have at least one joke when I do this. Are we going to consent to the board for this request then?
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss state appropriations for nonprofit funding. Ally Faunce?
Hello, good morning. So, just kind of some background. And then, North Carolina's most recent budget, $1.5 million, was approved to come to Harnett County to be passed along to 46 different entities as determined by Senator Bergen. So, eight of these entities are internal, and they're receiving their funding through internal transfers. But the remaining 38 are external recipients, and they must sign funding agreements before we can give them the funding. So, they need to sign it, and also we need to sign it. So, before you today are agreements with Andrew Area Food Pantry, the Ark of Harnett County, Blessing Box Ministry, Five and Two Ministries, Harnett Food Pantry, His Daily Bread Community Ministries, Project Not Forgotten, Sandhills Antique Farm Equipment Club, Santa and Friends, and Shawtown High School Alumni Association. So, all of these before you today have been signed except for one, and it will not, if it is not returned to me in time for next week's meeting, then it will just not be on the agenda for next week. I'll bring it to the next board work session. But we ask that you approve and sign these first 10 funding agreements so we may move forward with providing the funding to these organizations.
I just, when will the funds be distributed? When will they be distributed?
Oh, within a week of your approval. So, if we, if you approve and sign it at next week's meeting, then within roughly a week, hopefully a few days.
Oh, okay, because it's got to be voted on next week, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, we approve.
Consider the board to put this on the consent agenda for next week?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Willis, discuss register of deeds office reorg.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Wetherspoon, Commissioner McCoy, Commissioner Matthews. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you guys this morning. I'm Matthew Willis. I have the honor and privilege of serving the citizens of Harnett County as the registrar of deeds. I've been in office a little over two years, and I think this is my second time coming in front of you, so I'm only averaging one time a year. I think that's too bad. Before I get started, first, I just want to thank you guys and ma'am for your service. We know you don't do it for the money. I've known most of you for a number of years, and I truly believe that the tough decisions that you guys and ladies make is based on what's best for the citizens of Harnett County, and we truly appreciate that. County and, uh, we truly appreciate that. Next, Mr. Trout, uh, Janice Lane and Lisa McFadden, I want to thank them for their assistance with my preparation for this. I know Commissioner Johnson's no longer on the board, but I do believe you guys hit a home run when y'all selected Mr. Trout as the county manager. Um, he's done a great job and it's been nice working with him so far. And also, um, Janice Lane and HR, wow. I've tried to get this process started previously. It never happened. First discussion with Ms. Lane, she got right on it and that's why I'm here today. So I do appreciate that. The reason I'm here is reorganization of the Register of Deeds Office. When I was elected in November of 2020, um, we had some staff changes. I promoted from within. I moved, uh, deputy from Vital Records to the admin assistant position and the admin assistant that served under Ms. Hargrove for about 12 years, I promoted her to my former position of assistant register of deeds. As we all know, things don't always go according to plan. It was determined by the admin assistant that she didn't feel like she could continue performing the role as admin assistant. She enjoyed working with the public on a daily basis. She came from Vital Records, which basically about 95% of our walk-in traffic. She wanted to get back out and working with the public and I did not want to lose her. So at that time, I let her go back to Vital Records and my assistant registered that was previously admin assistant. She, without hesitation, took the responsibilities of the admin assistant back over. That was not my intention when I started. I wanted her to be able to learn everything in the office from Vital Records to real estate recording. She already knew the finance side and every, everything else, so I wanted her to be able to perform every task in the office. Again, she's not had the opportunity to do that because she's been doing all the admin assistant work, which includes all the financial stuff, um, and basically she's right beside me, so she, she keeps me under control and makes sure that I'm doing what I need to do. So with this request, um, there's a bunch of parts kind of go hand to hand to try to get all this done. So first, I'll go ahead and say, the, the main goal is to get a new admin assistant. So Lori can get back out and learn everything that I was hoping that she could do in the office. So to get this done, again, there's moving parts. The, the admin assistant that went back to Vital, she still has the title of admin assistant. And this has been since May of 2021, so we're almost two years into her being out there. So to get her back to a, um, regular title, we have a frozen position, this, uh, deputy supervisor position. The new classification is going to be deputy three. So I'm asking that hopefully we can unfreeze that position and then once that position's unfrozen, we can reclassify it to a senior deputy, which will be moved into a deputy two position. So it'll drop the pay grade of that position and, um, the staff member of this, uh, still titled admin assistant, she would go into the deputy, senior deputy or deputy two position. When that happens, then that's going to finally open up the admin assistant position that I would like to fill, um, promote for and get applications for, see if I can find somebody to fill the admin assistant position. And again, that will allow, um, Lori, my assistant register, to finally get into the role that she was promoted to back in 2020. So again, there's a lot of moving parts to it. And basically I'm asking for your help. I did not put it in my budget this past year. At the time, I didn't think I needed it, but with, um, staff that's been there, you know, over 20 years, they do have vacation time, um, there's always sick leave and about a month after I submitted my budget, I found out I was going to have an employee out on maternity leave. So we're not a big office. We're, we're the smallest staff the Register of Deeds Office has had in probably 25 years. At one point, there were 15 people in the office, including me, there are eight in there now. So with this position, it would put our office to nine staff members. I think I mentioned it last year when I was here, we're recording more now than we ever have. It's not unique to our department, but as the county grows, our office is busier and busier, not only with real estate documents, but that also includes more births in the county, more deaths in the county, and, uh, believe it or not, more marriages in the county. Folks tend to come from Wade County and Cumberland County just because I like to say we're a lot more friendly than they are, but it's also a lot easier access to our office. So we don't turn away anyone when it comes to that. We're issuing more marriage licenses than we ever had. That probably ends up in Renee Whitten's office down the road, but that's out of my hands. And, you know, again, there's, there's stuff, ever since I've been there, I've tried to cut costs. I'd never want to ask the board for money, um, but to help me achieve this, I would need your help to, to move forward earlier than the next budget year. And talking with Lisa McFadden, if we were able to hire this position in February and to finish out February to, um, the end of June, it's going to run about, uh, $25,900, somewhere in there. And, um, you know, I would, I would budget for it in the upcoming year. Again, I, I've done, I think I've done a good job at cutting costs in the office. I changed my software last year. I didn't ask the board for any money to do that. I, I do have a unique situation in my office where I do have an automation fund where a percentage of each document recorded goes into this automation fund and I'm, I'm able to use that to, um, keep my office updated and with, with the times. Again, um, I'm just asking for your help to help me get through this year so I can budget for it in the future. Any questions that I can answer or?
So if I understand correctly, Mr. Willis, basically we would be unfreezing a position that's already there. That would allow you the opportunity to make these other changes and fall in. So technically we're not really adding a position, we're just opening up a position that has been frozen.
That's correct. Yes, sir. I must have explained it better than I thought I could.
You did a very good job. Very good job. And Mr. Trout, I'm assuming that, uh, the money that Mr. Willis mentioned, the 25,000 to, uh, pay a salary and through the end of this fiscal year, uh, is readily available through positions that have been vacated through the year. That's my assumption.
The actual target for the budget minimum will be fund balance, but you're correct. I think with the opening lap salaries, we'll be able to cover this.
Be able to recover that. Yep. Thank you.
Good with that? Everything's good?
It's been on for next week.
Like to put that on the consent agenda for next week?
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Willis. Discuss the extension chairmanship on the workforce development board. Mr. Trout?
Oh, wait, um, the legislative priorities.
That's still you, discuss legislative priorities.
So big, big thing today, um, and, uh, can you pull the power? So what I have sent you is the legislative priorities from last year. But as I went through it and looked at the legislative priorities from last year, I found that most of those probably are still relevant to us this year. We've been making some accomplishments as it relates to some of those priorities, as it relates to economic development, development at the airport and so on, but I don't think we're done yet. I think those are the areas that we need to continue to focus on. So I'm not looking to make a recommendation for any changes to the priorities, but I do want to go through them and make sure that if there's a particular area or emphasis that you want to put on them, we can do so and look for feedback from you as it relates to any of those changes. So we'll start through. So the first priority that was on there was economic development and there were four components to economic development. Natural gas, development of economic development sites, four line highways into Wade County and expanding our broadband access. So as you look at those, there's a lot going on in each of those areas. And so I think we're making progress. We're, we're putting an emphasis on those areas and we will do so with our legislature, uh, representatives to help us with those areas. So I think that, uh, this is clearly something that, um, we've been doing a good job of taking steps towards. Any comments that relates to economic development priorities? All right. The other two primary top legislative priorities were the airport, jet port, and then also additional solutions to assist with public educational funding. Obviously this is an area where we strongly have to work with our state representatives in order to help in, in the efforts that we're doing there. The funding that's necessary to make those changes at the airport, very evident with the funding we've received for the terminal project, we're going to need some help. Those are very expensive projects and we're going to need some help. We'll do our part to make sure we have a good functioning airport, but some of those projects are expensive and we're going to need some financial help. Same is true of the issues that relate to our educational funding. We need to continue to try and find ways to, uh, have the state provide us more help when it comes to building new, new schools. So these are two that I think should stay as well. Now we have some additional legislative priorities and they're very specific items. I looked at each of them. I think that they apply. We've made some steps, but some of them we really didn't focus on much this year with everything else that was going on, but I still think they need to stay on there. I think that, uh, the, the support, Campo, we've, we've had discussions with them. They're still saying there's some information they don't have before they can make a decision on expanding the boundary. They've stated it's coming. We, we've had a lot of debate with them. We're not unsure as to why we're not moving forward in that area. So we want to continue to push Campo with the discussion about extending the boundary further south towards us, cause we feel like there's opportunity there with Campo and the funding they have and being considered for their projects. Now I went on, um, support creation of a bypass around the city of Dunn. I haven't looked at that this year and so I was unsure as to whether this was one that we wanted to continue to pursue with all that they have going on. You know, the bypass is coming to Andrew, they're working on that, but I didn't recall from discussions that I did in the past as it relates to, to this particular item. So I did have some questions as to whether this should stay on, if there was an intent by someone at some point, um, or was it mislabeled and it should be Andrew instead of Dunn? So I opened it up for comment as it relates to this particular one. And the write-ups are in your, you know, the, the document that was provided. Any thoughts about the bypass of, uh, something that we should leave on or dig for more information?
Well, that's, a lot of that's my district now. Leave it on for the time being, but I'm going to talk to some of the business owners. Because if you build a bypass around Dunn, that's going to greatly impact downtown. I'll be in touch with it.
Okay.
I believe there's already a project assigned for that, project number assigned for that.
If, if, if I could, I, I know that that'll be discussed in the CTP update. There is currently, uh, I don't know if it's a project, a full-blown project at this point. It probably is, honestly. It's been around for years. So the idea of taking 421 and coming off 421 and trying to marry up with a, an easier direct access from an economic development standpoint to get to 95.
Yeah, I know there's a project, I think it originates out of Greensboro and takes 421 and does that.
No, this is a local. This is a local situation.
Either way, both of them are going to end up on top of me, so.
Possibly, yeah. But, but what I was going to say is we're getting ready to go through the CTP process, so it's a good opportunity at that point for us to, to get into it, find out if it's something that Dunn, like you said, like, it's find out if it's something.
Being the new member of the board, I hadn't had time to consult with many of my constituents that are business owners in downtown Dunn, which I'll need to do for our support deal.
Sure.
I think the business owners will find out that their business will increase if you get all the traffic that's not stopping out of downtown. There may be more people going downtown if they don't have to fight that traffic that's transit.
Maybe it will be the case.
I'm like, um, Commissioner Morris, some of that is my district too. And I will have to wait and see what plan you come up with before I can really say that. And I know they have it well. And I just wait till the plan is drawn up and see what information is provided to us.
Well, and that's one of those things too that we need to remember. And if, if, if we don't feel comfortable including it as an additional legislative priority at the start of the year, we can always add it. Once we get the information and once we look at, um, the facts that we have and that it's desired, then we can move forward with it as well. Take this additional information that, that Mark is talking about as we go through this transportation studies, it'll be able to help us to understand what's really being proposed and whether we want to pursue or support that or not. I think, uh, I did check with staff on a number of these that are specific as it relates to, for example, the bottom one, uh, provide communicable disease expansion funding. There's still a need as it relates to that. And so, uh, John Rouse has requested that we continue to keep that in as a priority. The same is true of expanding the fire prevention grant opportunities and the licensing and permitting for fire extinguisher and suppression system installation. Those are items that, uh, we miss out on some grant opportunities at the county level, based on the way the wording is in that program. And so we'd like to pursue being able to get some language change so that we can access that funding. And the same is true of some of the needs related to, uh, the licensing and permitting of fire extinguisher and so on. So, um, desire to continue to have discussions with our legislators in those areas. And then the last, uh, list, last three on the list, uh, those are still necessary. Probably could ask Commissioner Matthews to help discuss better the calendar issue. But obviously the trust fund money is necessary. It's very helpful for our farmers. And then also the, the block grants for our DSSS programs. ESS, it's, uh, one of those things where the additional funding is helpful for our residents and so a desire to continue to maintain those block grants for us. So those are the priorities. I think they still fit in line, but I'm also willing to take, uh, recommendations or suggestions as it relates to any others that, that we need to be considering here at this point in time.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I know this is not for, for the board here because it's more or less from Commissioner Matthews, uh, with the school system and all of that, you know? How can we encourage, uh, having input in speeding up what's going on out there at Johnsonville? Can you please ask that question because those funds have been, uh, available for a long time and from what I'm hearing, that's part of my district too. It's a lot of distress for the teachers as well as for the students out there in that area. Can, is there any way that you can check on that and see what's going forward with that?
I actually can probably provide some information right now if, if that's agreeable. That, that project was basically, uh, for anybody that is not familiar with that, that was basically, uh, a, uh, broken up into two phases because of funding at the time. The first phase was the, um, demolishing and rebuilding of this, the old school cafeteria and then some upgrades on the gymnasium. That, uh, Phase One project has been wrought with problems from the beginning. The second part, the Phase Two, uh, which is, was the building of, uh, a demolition of and rebuilding of the, of a classroom wing there. That, uh, was able to be funded through ESAR funds that were received as a result of, uh, COVID and that project is actually on schedule and, and proceeding. The, uh, footings have been poured and hopefully we'll begin to see some masonry work, uh, begin this week. But going back to Phase One, that's been the, um, thorn in, in, in our side from the beginning, I guess you would say. It got to the point where there was some consideration about terminating the contract with the contractor and rebidding that project. Of course, as you well know, that would, that would put that project even further behind. So through some intense discussions with the school board's attorneys, with the, uh, general contractor's attorneys, with the surety. contractor's attorneys, with the surety involved, we have seen a marked increase in progress in the last, since before Christmas. Basically, they're to the point that the window folks are on site now installing windows. They're about seventy, they were about 70% complete as of yesterday. All the tile in the bathrooms and the cafeteria is about 95% complete. Installation of the kitchen equipment is supposed to begin this week. The HVAC units, RT unit, units on top of the gymnasium are installed. Central Electric has supplied conditional service so that they've been tested and passed all their inspections. We're hoping that permanent service will be put in place this week so that space can be conditioned and they can start putting the VCT or the tile down. And they actually have already begun a little bit of the painting, interior priming, but once that space is conditioned, then they can complete that. So I'm, I'm happy to say, but guarded in saying that the project has at least begun to move, but you know, I'm hesitant to say that we're sailing free and clear because the way this has gone, I'd be afraid it would shut down today. But right now I am more encouraged than I've been in months and, and it has been a, a challenge for those administrators and school employees and teachers there. They have done an admirable job of continuing to have school every day, instruct students in the face of not nearly the best of circumstances.
Well, I don't want to say that I'm very pleased to hear this report because it's not only a hardship on the staff there, but it's a hardship on the students out there too. So thank you so much and I appreciate you giving the answer and all because I know most people in this county don't understand. There are two, two governments here, county commissioner as well as in the school board, but they are still asking questions like, we supposed to solve the problem? So I appreciate your answer. Thank you so much.
Yes ma'am, no worries. And, and, and I will be glad to keep you updated along as, as we go along if you would like or if you hear more concerns so that you can report back to your constituents.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So if you have particular comments regarding language related to legislative priorities, please let me know. We do have a few numbers that need to be updated in the language regarding like median incomes and different things that need to be updated with the latest numbers. And we'll work through that and then bring you back a finalized document. If you feel strongly one way or another related to the Dunn bypass one, let me know and we can either pull it or leave it in and, and address it as a lower priority once more information's known. The other area that I want to cover briefly, if you can switch PowerPoints, is our project funding priorities. One of the things that I heard was a need to have us talk about what do we want to have funding for from the legislature? So one of our priorities that is mentioned at the very beginning of our legislative priorities is additional help for the airport. So I've listed a couple of different projects related to the airport. You know, your runway extension project, which is a very expensive project at 22.5 million for a total cost, broken down into two pieces, the site preparation, earthwork, and then the paving and lighting. We have to move a lot of dirt in order to extend the runway to the south and that's a big part of the cost, buying land to move dirt from and so forth. Next project is a corporate hangar development. We want to see more hangars out at that airport. And so therefore that's one of our projects, just to construct the taxiway and the pad-ready sites. We've been contacted by individuals that are willing to build their own hangar, they just need a spot to be able to build it. And so if we can get that developed into the new area where our new land will be, that'll give us a great opportunity to get some additional hangars out at the airport. Couple of other projects that I put there, the Greenway project design. We've had some concepts related to running a greenway from Lington to Raven Rock and also Lillington to Booze Creek. We need to get harder numbers as it relates to that. And we know that costs have been presented are about a million per mile for a trail. And so not sure we have a good handle on what our costs would be and how the route would go. So if we could get this project designed, that would give us then the next step to be able to go in and ask for the money to be able to do the greenway. We know we have an animal shelter, we'll be talking about that in February, but the high end of the costs are $10 million. And so looking at the possibility of, if we could get a little bit of help, I'm not sure we can get 10 million for an animal shelter, but looking at maybe would they help us and become a partner with that project? In the next group of projects, I have a generator for standby power at a detention center. We currently have a generator there, but it will not power the entire building. So we've had a proposal to add a generator to then give us the full power or purchase a new generator that would run the whole complex. And so our estimated cost is about 2.7 million on that. Looking at recreational area that we toured, based on that cost and get some help from the legislature in order to be able to make that area ours and then be able to look at improvements down the road. Cape Fear Shiner Park improvements, we've have a project for about three, three years from now, some funding to improve that park. Looking at maybe that would be an option to get some funding for to be able to move that project up sooner on the list. Feasibility study, we've talked about natural gas. It's one of our priorities under economic development. We have discussions that we've had in the past with suppliers, but looking at maybe trying to get a feasibility study. They don't have a cost on what that would be, but it might give us additional facts and figures and information to help us pursue that with development. There are many other items on our CIP that don't have project costs that are out. And, and this is my looking at what's on our CIP and what we're looking at for the future and where I think it could be good targets for us to put forward as funding opportunities to the legislature. But I'm also wanting to see if there's any input you want to give me as regards to any of the particular projects that you've seen on our CIP list that you would like to see on this funding list.
I, I actually have two things I wanted to bring up quick. I know that we're going to probably go into more depth and discuss this in the future. However, I just want to Tarantino back to the required accurate county assignment of sales tax for delivered goods. I mean, obviously this is a high priority since we're kind of hemorrhaged and bled dry by sales tax in certain areas across the county all because of that nine-digit debt. But if we could also include possibly getting some help for these higher populated areas that we do have in the county, maybe trying to incorporate these areas and if we can provide some aid or help with groups that are trying to start up incorporated areas and down in the Anderson Creek area, as well as the barbecue in Spout Springs area as May help us solve kind of this issue a little bit quicker, be a roundabout way of doing it, give us an identity. Also, wanted to bring up, and this is my own, my own personal standpoint as far as the family farm land purchase that we brought and discussed. You have the Greenway project design and this is something we've been working on for several years. There's a lot of projects with that that we haven't really put a lot of energy or emphasis towards that are already on the books. I personally believe that this money that we would allocate in order to take on a whole nother endeavor and a whole nother project with this family farm could probably be spent towards projects that we currently have. Start getting them off the ground a little bit more, focus on what we have before we take on something else that's going to be more of an encumbrance as well. That's all that I really bring up. Anybody else?
Yeah, I do have, I guess, a question that Mr. Trout, you may not be able to answer, but hopefully, and I don't say Carl, but hopefully somebody else staff can, but I think in regard to the Greenway project, most of that work has been done through, if not all of that has been done through grants up to this point, is that correct? Totally. Pretty, pretty much so, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. And, and but my question is more of an informational question for me. I know that you talked about the study of the, regarding natural gas expansion. Is that like broadband in that the companies want you to show that need? In other words, that they can have enough customers and so it's really on our shoulders to prove that point? They're not going to spend the money to prove it, but if we can prove that point, then there's a chance they might expand, that it would be profitable to him, to them?
I agree, that, that is exactly what we need to do. We need to be able to show our case better to them, to show them the needs that are there and the interest that's there. And if we can do that, then I think we'll have a better chance of presenting our case to get them to consider our area over expansion in a different area.
Right, right.
That show us, show them the desire that we have for that area.
Okay.
If I may, they actually got to do a survey for return on investment so they canvass the area. They got to see where they're at, then they look at their costs and they look and see if their return, to see if it's beneficial for.
Right, see if it's going to be profitable, exactly. Thank you.
I, I just want to add something to that. I hope it, I hope it works and I hope it goes through, but some of that work has already been done. It's been done over a number of years. And still we're not able to get natural gas in some of the areas that is much needed, much needed out there in the western part of the county on 87 and all of that area. And it would expand out there, retail, not only retail, it would expand retail across this, this county here. And I'm, I'm in favor of all that you all have said and all the work that you have done because we need something in this county to offset these taxes that the citizens have to pay. And we just don't have it. So we got to start putting forth effort for that. Got a lot of new homes being built here. We got a lot of new citizens being built here. But still in the back of my mind, this is still a retired community county. And that's what I, 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 I'm concerned about the future.
Anybody else? Is there, in, in your opinion, I guess, one of the last questions I had is rank ordering these items. Obviously with differing amounts for the various projects, a lot would be able to depend on what our representatives could be able to access. But I didn't know if there was a rank ordering or are they all similar? I mean, there's, to a certain extent, I see some rank ordering in the fact that the, the airport has been a priority and that maybe those would be most important as far as seeing. But some of those also have the highest price tag. So we want to shoot big, but we can also hope there is the possibility of additional funding always when you go start a new session. So you, you have high hopes that maybe we can secure a large grant and it's been done in the past. So I don't discount that ability, but didn't know if there was certain priorities or if we're good enough with the way I put them.
Would be out of the pleasure of the board in order to rank these. Get them back to Mr. Trump.
And I, I do have, do we have sheets?
You would.
I did include the sheets. If you would want to fill them out and turn them to me, I could then use that to rank order them and, and if you could complete those and give them to me.
Everybody had a chance to fill theirs out yet?
Yeah.
Do you mind if we just, you know?
Yeah, just complete them and get them back to me. So that we can include that and I can do the rank ordering and have that for you at the next meeting.
Well, I, I just want to say this one thing. Economic development is important to this county. We got to find some way to bring some jobs, some revenue here in this county. So anything pertaining to economic development growth, and I'm not trying to take over the meeting or whatever, I'm just telling you what is important. We don't even have a decent restaurant right here for people to even go to. I just want to, I've been working on this since I've been elected to this board. Not on the, on the board now because I'm taking up, but it's very important to the citizens of this county. We don't have any means for the young people in this county to have a future. And I, I look at, my kids don't even live in this state. And I would love to see parents that have kids in school that are coming out of school and these kids have somewhere to go for a future here in this county. So anything that we can do to settle around economic development, and I feel like the airport might be one of, one of the number one projects that would fit that. So other projects here would fit it too. But as long as we looking at trying to push something in this county to make the citizens' lives better, that's just my take. Thank you.
Well, I think we definitely have been talking about this for so long. Beat this dead equine to where there's nothing left but to do something. So I think we're there. So I appreciate everybody's help. We're, we're on the right track. Thank you very much, Mr. Trump.
You bet.
Appreciate the work you're doing too. Let me tell you that.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, these priorities have, have been there and I think they're definitely the focus that we need to have when it comes to legislative priorities. And so we'll, we'll work them up in a final document and bring them back to you next meeting for approval.
Thanks, sir. Well, you are up next again.
All right. Well, in the process of this year standing up the brand-new Workforce Development Board, Commissioner Weatherspoon, when he was chairman, took over the responsibility of being chairman of the newly formed board, did a lot of work to find representatives to serve on that board from our county, worked with the other two chairs of the other two counties. With the fiscal year the way it runs, we want to try and have him continue to be the chair of that Workforce Development Board for the next six months and then look at transitioning. It's one of those odd situations of how our chairmanship runs compared to the board of the Workforce Development Board. So we want to keep the momentum going and so recommendation was to consider keeping him as chair of the Workforce Development Board for the next six months and then transition off. The chairmanship will go to a different county next, in six months. And so in order to keep that board going along and the work that's already been done to keep him in that position, but we need to get the, this board to approve it.
Well, as the current chair and understanding this position and as well as Commissioner Weatherspoon spearheading this and very impactful on that board as well, I will recommend to make a motion that we extend Commissioner Weatherspoon's chairmanship of the Workforce Development.
Second, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second in order to extend Commissioner Weatherspoon's chairmanship on the Workforce Development Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. You opposed?
Yeah, I'm in favor, I'm in favor.
For discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, this is something we need to put on next week.
I think it should be actually on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, let's just put it on the consent agenda for next week.
Okay.
Yeah, that work.
Put it on the consent agenda?
Just put it on the consent agenda. Yep. Everybody in favor of that?
Yep.
Good. All right. Next up, review applications to serve on boards and committees.
If I may, sir, there are two that I would like to address. The Harnett County District H Tourism Development Authority. Mr. William Dan Andrews has applied for that. He's replacing a gentleman that was previously from District Four on that board, although there are no district requirements. And I would like to recommend him for that open slot. And then the town of Andrew has requested approval of Lee Marshall and Emily Plemons appointment for a two-year term to serve on the Andrew Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment. They are ETJ residents and because they are in the ETJ, the, the town cannot appoint them. It's up to the county commissioners to. It's up to the county commissioners to appoint them. But the town of Anger is recommending these two people for this position.
All right, well, here first off, is there any objection for the recommendation of Mr. William Dan Andrews to serve on the District H Tourism Development Board?
No objection.
Objection?
And I have an objection, just I understand now how these two people are selected to serve on this board.
According to the ETJ?
According to the ETJ, I do not understand that because I had not seen it since I've been here.
I'll get to that in just a second for discussion. But everybody is in favor from this. Or do we have an issue putting that on the consent agenda for approval next week? All right, we'll go ahead and do that. And now, as far as your comments and concerns according to the ETJ, ma'am? From, just to clarify from what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, these positions are recommended from the town of Anger, but as, you know, the bureaucratic red tape that comes along, we're the ones that have to be the government authority that actually approves them. There, so it's, it's a matter of just, uh...
Okay.
And in the place of the board of commissioners, the Harnett County Board of Commissioners, basically.
Designing authority.
Municipality.
Okay, well, maybe that's why I missed it, because I've been here five years and I ain't never, I've never heard a lot of it.
Yeah.
And what about I, I think about the ETJs and other areas in this county. That's the only thing I'd say, I just like to be, I like to understand things before I vote on them. And now that you explained, I don't have a problem with them.
All right, does anybody else have any issues with those two members recommended by the Anger Plant Board?
I'm fine.
Everybody's fine with that, we'll add that to the consent agenda as well next week. Adam Clerk? Thank you. All right, moving on through some more, does anybody have any other comments or questions?
Well, I would just say Chairman Nichols, since Mr. Rouse has recommended reappointment of Dr. Laura Smith and Dr. Stacy Hogan to the Board of Health, I would recommend that we accept that recommendation and, and put that on for next week as well.
I have a recommendation to accept the recommendation from Mr. Rouse for the Board of Health. Does anybody else have any objection against these two individuals?
I agree with that, I love both, oh.
Commissioner Weatherspoon?
Good.
Any objection? Objection, sir? We'll add that to an agenda for Dr. Laura Smith and Dr. Stacy Hogan for the Board of Health as well, please. I believe that is all of the appointments. We have a resignation from Anitra Hart for District Two. Her term expires on August thirty-first of twenty-three for the Commission for Women and Youth. So, would that leave us now with two vacancies? We'll have one for District Two and one for District Three now?
Yes.
Any of the commissioners have any recommendations or can think of anybody? Applications, clerk? All right, moving on to the county manager's board, Mr. Trump, you're up.
The only additional item I have is just a reminder that county offices are going to be closed next week to celebrate Martin Luther King Day. So, that will be closed. The other item is, I have one additional item to bring up regarding seventy-five thousand dollar, was that Mr. Porter? Dwight, you want to explain the issues?
We've had a request from the Board of Education for a budget amendment for the coming year for seventy-five thousand dollars. The request centers around an eminent domain case that they have brought up, which centers around the old library property in downtown Lillington. As some of you, most of you are aware, we had a, a year or so ago, we had a trade agreement or a property exchange agreement, I should say, with the Board of Education, the town of Lillington and the county regarding swapping various properties to assist Lillington in doing their downtown revitalization project. Part of that was obviously involving the library, the opening of the new library for Harnett County and the downtown library that we had was being abandoned, obviously for library purposes. And at that time, the property was conveyed as part of the overall scheme of things, was conveyed by the county to the Board of Education, who now owns that property. They have been spending money refurbishing that building for a Board of Education administrative building. And as part of that process, once the property was not used for library purposes, we had a reverter clause situation come into vogue, which you're aware of. When this property was first established, the W.A. Johnson, who was a lawyer in downtown Lillington, basically conveyed a portion of the parking lot to that building property to the county, on the condition that it always be used for library purposes. So, it had a reverter clause in it saying, basically, when the time came that it was not used for reverter purpose, for library purposes, then it would revert back to Mr. Johnson or his heirs. So, once the library was moved, the Johnson family called upon the county to allow that revert to occur, which by law we did. So, we conveyed that property, that parking lot portion, basically, which is like a point two acre tract, back to the W.A. Johnson family heirs, which are basically his three children. Since that time, the, the Board of Education has, from my understanding and talking with Charlie Bullock, their attorney, had tried to negotiate with the Johnson family heirs to get that property back, to make the property as a whole conducive to their ownership and for their uses for Board of Education purposes. That was not able to be done. So, because of that, Board of Education's made a decision, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Matthews, to commence eminent domain proceedings, which the Board of Education has legal authority to do. So, before you bring such a lawsuit, a thirty-day letter has to be sent. That letter has gone out. The Board of Education has retained outside counsel to conduct this eminent domain proceeding. And once the thirty days is up, which I understand will be on the twentieth of this month, then they intend to file the initial complaint for eminent domain. When you do that, you must submit at that time a deposit with the clerk of court for the amount of money that you feel like the property is worth. The tax value under the new revow puts a value of like seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars on this property. So, they're asking for, they just rounded it up to seventy-five thousand dollars, that's what they're contending the property is worth. So, they're coming to the county asking for a budget amendment for seventy-five thousand dollars for that amount. And so, that, they are asking for that and asking you to consider it at your meeting next week. If it would be your bidding to do that, then they would look at that as a budget amendment for seventy-five thousand dollars, which would go toward that deposit.
And if I may, Mr. Snow, I believe that money would come from some leftover bond proceeds from the building of a former school that we built.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
If I understand you right, it would have reverted back to them and we made fair market offer to them to try to purchase the property and they just don't want to sell?
That's my understanding. They, I understand they do have it listed with a realtor for amount of money, grade in excess of that value, they cannot come to terms between the parties. So, eminent domain is the, the next alternative and that's what the Board of Education's decided to go with. And I would, again, I'm just speaking for Charlie Bullock, who conveyed all this to me, who's the board attorney. They reluctantly did not want to do this. You never try to want to go get into eminent domain with any citizens of Harnett County, but they were just so far apart in this regard, they felt like they had to do this for the benefit, since it's a cost to the public, basically, so for the benefit of Harnett County citizens.
And I'm assuming, knowing the family, that they're going, if they would lose at the first level of the judiciary, they're going to appeal and appeal and appeal, and this could go on for you?
I could, that's a speculation, I couldn't, I couldn't have depended on that. Hopefully, it can be worked out, but basically, it's just eminent domain is eminent domain. So, we'll go the first step and they can see what happens from there. Hopefully, they can work things out.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of comments?
So, that, that would just up to your consideration for next, next Monday's, next Tuesday's meeting, I think, yes?
Pleasure, little board. Would you like to put this on the consent agenda for next week?
Yes, sir.
I'm fine with that.
Adam Clerk, we will put this on the consent.
Monday?
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything further? Any need for a closed session, sir?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to North County General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven eight three, I move that we go into closed session to consult with the county's legal counsel in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege concerning the handling of certain litigation, including the following case. Worker's compensation claim of Jonathan Ivy, IC file number twenty-two dash zero three five eight four three.
Motion for closed session?
I move.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session? We're in closed session?